Hey, Melinda. If I don't respond to your email from Tuesday by tomorrow, will you go with me?
Great timing. You ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, it's 6 o'clock. We will call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the side of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and the mayor is not able to be with us tonight. So we will start with council activity reports. I actually have nothing to report this week. Councilman?
Same.
Councilman Reiki?
Nope.
Councilman Gilmore?
Nope.
All right, and then on to our department head reports. Ron, would you like to start us off?
Sure. First of all, in your informational, there's a Lake Corones Aquatic Plant and Management Plan is in there. And Thursday night, there is a public hearing going to be held in Colespringe on that. And it is online also, so you can go in. The mayor has expressed interest in going, him and myself. He will go or for sure will watch it. The proposed assessment for the city of Painesville would be a total of about $454 annually if it goes through as proposed. Additional water samples that we have taken this month are trihalamethanes and are halocytic acids. What they are, that's a disinfection byproduct when you add chlorine. And if the water would have too much organics in it, they would combine and create that disinfection byproduct. So they were taken this month as they are every September. And I guess we've never had an issue. Those would generally come into play if we would be pulling surface water. Let's see, parks, our last reservation out at the beach is October the 10th. So after that, we will be shutting everything down. Leaf pickup again is on 10/24. The compostable bags only will be accepted, and they do need to be out on the curb by about 7:00 a.m. Our irrigation system, we will be wrapping that up later this week. We do have the facility down low enough to carry us through the winter. So next week, we will have an intern here from the St. Cloud Tech College, the web program. He will spend a week with us, learning about the wastewater field. And then also, there's been a little bit of a renewed interest in the Glacier Lakes, the regional trail. Was at a meeting this morning on that. Remember, that's the trail runs from Wilmer someday opposed to to St. Cloud. One of the big sections that is not completed is from the Cano High County line to Roscoe. That's the section that we were meeting on today. So you will be hearing more about that in the future also.
Great. Thanks, Melinda.
Elections are ramping up. Kristen's had several absentees come in. We do have to be open on October 31st, which is a Saturday, from 10 to 3, for absentee voting. We have had another entity, I think I reported last time, that one of the entities for the fire department offered to buy some equipment, COVID-related equipment for the fire department with their COVID money. And we've had a second township come forward. So Rachel's been working on a list for me to present to them. We are going to have our first liaison visit in motor vehicle department this next week. First one we've had in a couple of years. They're going to be bringing out new equipment for the mindrive program that's rolling out in November. I don't know if they will be bringing out a quote-unquote "report card" like they used to or not. I'm not real sure on that. And the library did a survey, and they've got some proposed new hours. Same days, just switching the hours up just a little bit based on what the public would like. And that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have our consent agenda. We have the minutes from two council meetings and the Public Works Board. And we have vouchers totaling $137,413.96. And the police department, a request for Chief Wagner to sign up Officer O'Brien for the virtual predatory offender registration and investigation training.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second?
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
That carries. New business. First up, we have the fire department, 2019 Fire Relief Association Audit.
Good evening. Just jump right into page nine. This is our financials for a special fund and a general fund. As of December 31, 2019, totals on special fund and pension fund, $651,241. General fund, $32,000. That's a fundraiser funds, $32,993. Skip ahead to page 23. Financial projections for 2020. At the time of the audit, which was pre-COVID, was a surplus of $191,615. We will get back to this page later on. Page 24 is an important one for the city. The last, this is our calculation for municipal contribution, and as always, it's due. So the $5,000 that the city contributes has been sufficient. Page 25. State has calculation for maximum benefit amount. Right now, we're at $2,000 on their benefit amount, which I totally disagree with, is $3,900. That'll be $3,900 per year of service. And that's what we're hell of a good finish of December 31st. Up ahead to page 33, fundraiser monies. 2018, at the end of the year, we were at $36,000. We're at $32,993. That is since we've lowered again, made some big purchases. Page 35. There again, that's just our calculation on our month, our income and expenses for the pension trust funds. The end of year 2018 was $606,000. End of year 2018 was $657,000. And then I just want to call attention to page 47. That's our funded ratio. So we've been 100% or very near since 2012. We've been doing very well.
I move to approve the 2019 Fire Department Relief Association Audit. Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2019 Fire Department Relief Association Audit. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And next is page 50. Fire Department Bylaws Amendment. Brad, do you want to give us an update on that as well?
Sure. So every couple of years, the state, these are for the Relief Association bylaws, every couple of years, the auditor's office comes up with a new guide and some statutory changes that come into play. None of the statutory changes are going to affect us this round. But there are a couple of housekeeping items. Article 2, Section 2, we'd like to strike, the furbage is stricken, we'd like to strike and add that the membership date begins on the date that they're hired by the city. So previously, you had to wait a year before your 20-year starts. We would like to start that on the date of hire. It just makes things, makes bookkeeping a whole lot easier. And then the other thing would be the dues. They can be deposited in either the special fund or the general fund. We had specified the general fund. We prefer to have them deposited in the special fund. That's the pension fund. And both of these changes are carbon copied, they're cut and paste from the auditors' data.
I move to approve the Fire Department Relief Association Bylaw Amendments. Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Fire Department Relief Association Bylaw Amendments. Is there any discussion on that?
What is the probationary period?
One year.
One year?
Yes.
Sort of basically moving us up a year.
Right.
Anything else?
Think that'll help on recruiting or?
I don't. I think it's strictly just, seriously, it's just me. It's my bookkeeping that's going to be a whole lot easier. It's really all it is.
Are we making this retroactive as well?
No. It'd be at the date of... So for retirements from this point on? Right.
So it's not just for hiring, hirees from here on?
Right. So the bylaws are in effect when you retire as far as the payment amount, and your years of service is all effective as the date that you retire.
Okay.
So those that are deferred are stopped with the way it is now.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And next, page 53, is the Fire Department Service Benefit Increase.
So that's page 55, is that calculation worksheet of page 24 that I thought we were going for. So this is increasing our benefit to $2,100 rather than $2,000. So $2,100 a year, per year of service is what you get after 20 years. After doing the calculation and figuring zero appreciation or depreciation on our investments, we would still be overfunded by $94,000. We think that the way that the market is right now, we want that cushion. But we also feel like if we're going to be overfunded by $150,000 or whatever it is right now, that we owe it to our members to increase the benefit amount. It hasn't been increased since 2008. And we believe that it's time. We've lost a lot of...
And I believe if the market goes down and so forth, then there's an audit check that has to bring that down too, correct?
It doesn't have. Well, it can bring it down, or we can opt to pay into the fund to bring it back to fund.
Okay.
And that's only at time of audit, so we have some grace there. You know, if we hit a rough stretch like now, we get it in March. We hit it at the right time because it really dropped, but it built right back up to almost where it was before.
So the odds of everybody leaving at the same time is pretty nil.
It's pretty nil, and our liability is pretty low right now. You know, we've only got three guys that are eligible to retire at this time. Everybody else is pretty young. We've got a long time before that's full liability.
I'll make a motion to approve the increase in years of service benefit from 2,000 per year to $2,100 for Ansel Fire Department firefighters. And you mean that effective today? Or does it just come because we said it? It started at zero, right?
So it's as proved, so yeah, effective today.
Second?
All right, we have a motion to approve the increase in years of service benefit from 2,000 per year to 2,100 for the Painesville Fire Department firefighters. Any further discussion?
I guess my one question is why just 2,100 and not higher? But I think what I'm hearing is that 21 gives you enough of the cushion in case stuff hits the fan in the future.
Correct. There is still some volatility with the election, and COVID is still alive and well.
That's right. I just wanted, if we had room to go higher, then I'd want to talk about that. But if that's where you need to be, then we can just keep it.
This is work for both.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, it's page 56, Snow Plowing Contract.
Yeah, like it or not, it's that time of year. Contract is closed in your packet there. The hourly rate did not change at all for plowing. I guess what did, in the previous contract, we had a retainer of $1,000 per month, and for that $1,000, we had eight hours of service time. Under this proposed one, that's been eliminated, and we now just have a $500 per month retainer. When you come through, do all the math, I would estimate we're looking at about a $1,200 increase annually. So I guess you break it down, $250, $300 a month. Public Works, we did look at this, and they did recommend that it be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the snow plowing contract between the City of Painesville and DND Snow Plowing.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the snow plowing contract between the City of Painesville and DND Snow Plowing. Is there any more discussion on that?
Ron, the way it was with the thousand, we paid that whether it snowed or not.
Correct.
And if it didn't snow that month, we didn't get our eight hours.
Yes.
Just now, we're going to pay 500. But if it snows, we're going to pay the hundred and a quarter for...
Per hour. Correct.
So if it don't snow, we're ahead.
We're ahead.
You can always hope, right?
Gives you something to root for.
Buy a new snow bill, won't snow.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And the next thing is from our updated agenda, the ordinance fine schedule on page 2. Bill, would you like to give us a report on that?
Sure. The ordinance fine schedule is kind of on page 65, 66, 67, 68. And then I sent along this agreement that Stearns County had sent out around the first of the year that I had signed it. I just thought explained kind of how this sort of works. Seems like it wasn't that long ago, if you have an ordinance violation, you just brought a copy of the ordinance and offered a copy of the ordinance with the affidavit of publication. But as the years have gone by, they've created this fine schedule, and the prosecute ordinances, you have to get them put on the fine schedule. So if you look on the first page of this, it's kind of got at the top on the left-hand column are the things that used to be on there. When we went through and redid the city code, I thought, well, we might as well put more stuff in there because we had never covered everything. So I did. You can see that I have some things in the column that says recommended payable, yes or no. I put no because I thought, well, we could theoretically have that situation arise where we'd have that violation. I'd rather not have them be automatically treated as petty misdemeanors. You know, the fines are, I mean, it was just me going through and kind of thinking what would be an appropriate fine for those kinds of violations, based on what I think judges are likely to do anyway. So those are just numbers I came up with. I think I had sent this to the chief, and the chief had said they looked fine to him. But I think Melinda thought that council should look at it. So it's before you, I don't know if you have any questions or comments, but that's, if you think any of the fine things are way off, we could certainly change them. Or I guess it hasn't been submitted yet, so any comments or changes that the council thinks would be appropriate can still be made. I've signed that agreement, obviously, and sent that in, but the fine schedule stuff here hasn't been done yet.
Why do we have on here a fine for garage sales three consecutive days? Well, one of the things on here that I noticed was that there's a $100 fine for garage sales three consecutive days. Is that something that we actually have in our ordinances?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe it's been abused in the past, but...
Well, I think it's really common for people to do Thursday, Friday, Saturday garage sales. So it doesn't seem like something we're enforcing, but...
I think it goes on to read that by May, within so many calendar days. So you can have a Thursday, Friday, Saturday sale, then you cannot have the next sale within so many calendar days. And it's trying to keep, for instances where we had a place where they just had a garage sale every weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
I think we had people that basically buying stuff and then reselling it. And it was essentially a home business, and we were trying to get away from that.
Okay. Is there any action we need to take on this?
If you tell me that, if the council tells me that they're okay with it, I'll send it in. That's the only thing. I guess I was just looking for council to give their blessing to sending it in.
So some of these went up?
I would say, I would say, I would say the ones that we had before, it probably didn't change. But there was a lot of things that we didn't have in the fine schedule before that I added because I thought, rather than, because the way it worked in the past, every time we had a violation that wasn't included in what was already on the fine schedule, I had to go through the process of adding it before we could have a hearing. So I just thought, as long as we were doing it, I was just going to catch as many of them. I mean, there's probably still things in the ordinance that, in our code, that aren't in there. But I thought, I was going to try to catch all the stuff that I thought was likely to actually happen. So that's what I endeavored to do. I'm sure I missed one or all, find out that it happens, but...
I think, Bill, my only thought is some of these, the 20.2B series, like the recklessly handling a gun, you have as a payable, which could be then a petty, along with the unlawfully sell a manufacturing weapons. And I'm just wondering if some of these where there's a personal safety issue at stake, if those should be really on the payable list?
And I can certainly take them off. I have other ones that I give you off. I think the one, I know there's, my eyes are so bad, it's hard for me to see, but I had the intentionally pointed gun, I didn't have on, but I probably wasn't as consistent. So yeah, I could certainly take those, the recklessly handling a gun, intentionally pointing, and unlawful sale or manufacturer, I could take those out of there for sure. You're suggesting all of them in 20.2 should probably be no.
What's the age you can go hunting them? Do you know where else? People with firearms training, how old can they go with?
Well, that's still, you got the firearms training, you have to be 12.
Because there's a child under 14 handling a firearm in here. Can you take firearm training when you're 12?
Maybe that needs to be revised at the ordinance level.
I always just... Because you can't take it without.
Yeah.
That one, you see where that one's at?
Yeah. That must be what our ordinance says. Maybe the ordinance isn't...
You know, I think that one's correct a few years ago, 10 years ago, maybe.
What number is that?
20.2B7. But I could take all of those 20.2 ones, except maybe the fireworks one, and make them all non-payables, if that's your wish.
That would be my preference. I'm but one vote here, but that's where I'm at.
What does that mean to make them non-payable? Does that mean that they will have to have a hearing?
Yes, that would mean that they couldn't just send in a check for the fine amount and have it treated as a petty misdemeanor. That it would be, in the end, the court may still treat it as a petty misdemeanor. It doesn't mean it wouldn't happen that way, but it wouldn't be automatic.
Okay.
Yeah, my thought on it is just a petty misdemeanor, in theory, isn't technically a crime. I think if you're mishandling a weapon, especially if it involves a child, then that should be something that's looked at criminally rather than non-criminal.
Well, that's fine. And my guess was that if they were a serious gun violation, that they'd probably be being handled by the county attorney and not charged by ordinance in the first place. But still, I take that as a, that would be a reasonable amendment to what I have here.
I think that would make sense to me, too.
So then I will move adoption of the fine schedule subject to making the violations we discussed in Section 2.2B to be non-payable citations. And I move that for adoption or for presentation to the county or whatever Bill needs to do with it.
I'll second that if we need one.
And then we'll have to come back on the 14 thing.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the fine schedule with the exception of the changes in 20.2B that were discussed. Was there, what was the rest of that?
That was my motion, and just authorizing Bill to do whatever he needs to do.
Okay, and authorizing the attorney to do whatever he needs to do with this. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. All right, the next thing we have is our Police Department 2019 Annual Report.
Thank you. So nothing like better late than never. So before the council meeting, I handed out the Police Department's 2018 report. It's pretty much set up a lot like it has been every year. Just kind of go through some highlights. 2019, much like 2020, was, you know, an interesting year. We started out the year with an unexpected resignation of an officer, which kind of put us behind the eight ball from the get-go because we had Tom leaving for K-9 training. And then we had, we had some issues through the middle of the year with an injury that kind of set us back again. But not dwelling on that, you know, there were some positive things that did come out of 2019 for us. We did work with the school district and created a new SRO program, something that's a little more sustainable than what we've had in the past. Brought in several retired former officers that were able to come in and assist us with that, and Officer Feigem and Officer Lepatka, which both of them have been a significant asset, not only to the school district, but also to the city as a whole. As we kind of look through some of our numbers, once again, our crimes against a person dropped, they dropped significantly last year. However, we did have the one homicide. And we also saw a significant drop in like our restraining order violations and harassment, restraining order violations. Our property crime also decreased slightly. Our property crime also decreased slightly, by about 7%. Biggest thing was, I think, our general theft calls and property damage went down. However, our gas drives ups, our gas drive offs, they go up just a little bit. Other than that, you can see kind of where the increases were. Officers did a, you know, probably 200 to 300 additional hours last year in TZD, which is reflected in our numbers of traffic stops for last year. And then, as you can see towards the back, we've got an additional section now that we've added in, where we'll be tracking all the K-9 activity that we've had with Tom and Jerry as they move forward. Any idea how 2020 compares?
I assume you don't have official numbers, but just a guesstimate?
As far as where we're sitting number-wise?
Yeah.
Let's see, we're at about 2,300 ICRs right now. I would say we're probably down a little bit on our, our actual ICRs, but that's going to be a direct reflection of... It's going to be an interesting year, although tomorrow I'm going to start on the 2020 year-end report, so hopefully we'll have that before February next year, so... But I think our numbers are down just a little bit from where they, where they are this year.
All right, I don't think we need to take any action on that one. So, up next, we have resignation of police secretary and the accounting specialist.
So unfortunately, we have received the resignation letter of our secretary and the accounting specialist, Stephanie Soraki. Her effective end date will be October 7th. I believe both Belinda and I have spoken with her about kind of the city's needs moving forward, at least in the interim. She has expressed some interest in at least staying on some during the weekends to assist getting through kind of a transitions, especially with payroll, until we can get somebody up to speed, or whatever the city chooses to do with that, whether it's farm that out to some other entity or otherwise, so... I wish her the best, that she's going to be a huge loss to the city, but unfortunately, she's going and leaving for a job that's going to pay about $5 an hour or more.
Is there any, have you guys had any kind of opportunity to look into, I think you and I had talked last week about options?
Yep, I've got some calls out there on outsourcing, just to get feelers out there and see what, what prices are. I know it's been talked about in the past. I did reach out to a company in Hold Spring. One of our past payroll specialists actually left us to go to that company, so I reached out to them. They said that a rough guesstimate off the number of employees we have would be, it would cost approximately $400 a month to outsource payroll. You would also have some setup expenses that, until they dig into it deeper, they would not know what those were. Our accounting firm, Schleuder-Werner, actually has a payroll department that also outsources. Stephanie and I had a phone conversation with them this morning. She was going to get some reports to them, and they're going to give us a idea of what kind of cost we'd be looking at. And I also have a call into Ingramson down here, and they did call me back this morning, asked me how many employees we have and a few questions, and they're going to get some information to me as well. All of them did say that, you know, we have to have all the paperwork ready for them to enter payroll, so all the prep work would still be done at city level, which is a good, according to Stephanie, that is a major portion of the hours spent on payroll.
Yeah, I don't know if Christensen is over here downtown here or not. I know they do some, but I'm not sure they do payroll or not.
What's that?
Christensen?
Okay.
Down over there? They, they do our church, the payroll, everything. And then there's CDS also.
Where are they out of?
They're in... They're in Schmeezine, Lomers, St. Cloud, St. Joe.
Okay.
Before we get to that, though, I'm just curious, if we move to accept Stephanie's resignation, are we even able to keep her on part-time?
Well, I think the motion would have to include that, you know, I mean, I think it'd be better to pay her part-time hours, maybe at what her hourly rate is now, instead of totally accepting a resignation and paying her some type of contract later, right? That doesn't really make...
Well, can we approve the resignation and rehire her back part-time?
I'm just wondering if we can't move to, move her from full-time to part-time status effective October 7th, on an interim basis, to facilitate training of a new employee or transitioning?
I think so.
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, I think I got it. So we have a motion to move, or to not actually accept the resignation, to move Stephanie Soraki from full-time to part-time effective October 7th, 2020, in order to facilitate the training of a replacement?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
And then I think it would probably be in the city's best interest for us to put out a request for proposals on outsourcing the payroll and anything other financial that Stephanie might do.
Is, that would be good, but should we see what kind of people are out there looking for it, because if we go back to part-time, we're back to part-time again. Stephanie was full-time because she did both jobs, correct?
Correct.
Now, if we go back to the police secretary end of it, how many hours is that, like 20 hours a week?
That was kind of what it was slated for. I mean, the position, to be honest with you, the position itself could be a 40-hour position. When Stephanie started, there were, there was plenty of stuff for her to do, to keep her busy for 40 hours. Now, some of that was makeup, but I was also in the process of training Cody, so she never really fully got all of her, you know, all of those responsibilities initially. You know, if we outsource some of it, I don't know what that does. I guess I would like to either sit down with, you know, Belinda and Ron, and discuss our policies and procedures, and kind of discuss conceptually what this looks like moving forward. All my guys are trained in doing RMS entries, so we'll be able to, you know, get through. You know, it'll take them off the road for a little bit, but we'll be able to get through until we can come up with a workable solution.
I think we should go forward with what Sean said, but I also think we should think about if we can find another, somebody who wants the 40 hours, we can do 2020 at the same time.
I agree, that's why I like the request for proposal idea, because we're not locked in, we don't have to accept it, but it tells us what we're looking at as far as the cost is concerned.
Right, I'd agree with that.
And I did touch base with Stephanie this morning, we had a meeting, and I just asked her timeline, you know, what do you, what do you spend your days doing? What, what is time, you know, time? And she said, once you get payroll down, it takes about a day, every two weeks. That's got the bigger learning curve to it, and it's, it's a hard trainable thing, because it changes every pay period due to the oddball things we have with call-out hours and night pay, and there's just a lot of oddball things out there. Accounts payable is a much more lengthy process to get it accomplished, but it's much simpler, the learning curve isn't as high. She said that usually takes two to three full days every two weeks to do. Transcription, she said she, she really didn't feel like she could give a good answer on that, because when she started, she was behind, and she did a lot of that, and then payroll and accounts payable were put on her in October or in November, so she has been, again, behind the eight ball with transcription, because she would put that on the back burner when she was doing those jobs, and trying to learn those, of course, took her longer than once you're trained.
I think this would be a good topic for our working session, isn't it? So, I don't know if we need a motion for...
You don't want to send it to the Policies and Procedures Committee?
I'm not opposed to it, it's just that doesn't mean until after the working session. That's the only reason why I thought we should go there first.
Okay.
I, I think a working session would be a good idea to get the different ideas out there, maybe which direction we want to go.
All right, can you add that to our agenda? Working sessions, sounds good.
Do we need a motion on the request for proposals, or can we just go forward on that?
I could just go forward and get them, I think.
Okay.
Or you want to wait till after the working session?
Well, I did ask all of them to get me some guesstimate quotes by the working session.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, that would be good.
Then we can go from there and refine or whatever. We need information.
All right, the next thing under new business is on our updated agenda, page five, the liquor licenses. Belinda, do you want to talk about that?
Yep. The Eatery at 112, which is the new business going into the old Wishing Well, has brought in their liquor license application. You know, that, that license, both the liquor license on sale and the Sunday liquor license run from January through December, and he is hoping, depending on how quickly the state turns around his license, to be able to open sometime in October. So that was where I had come with the recommendation to prorate the fee, instead of charging him a full year for the three remaining months of the year, prorate it out to 800 for the on-sale and 50 for the Sunday sales.
That would only make sense. Yes, so she's building one and just starting it right now, there's no reason to charge him a whole year for three months.
Especially when we're also considering going back and retroactively refunding other businesses, so...
Yeah.
And I actually have the applications for the liquor license to hand out for 2021, so we're going to turn it around in just a few weeks and give him his new application and want more money.
Yeah. So I move to approve on-sale liquor and Sunday liquor license for the Eatery at 112 LLC, and charge a prorated fee of $800 and $50, respectively.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve on-sale liquor and Sunday liquor licenses for the Eatery at 112 LLC, and charge a prorated fee of $800 and $50, $800 and $50, respectively. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
That carries. It's exciting to have a new business coming to downtown. All right, on to old business, we have our water facility, water treatment facility improvements.
Yes, at the beginning of September, we received quotes for the water treatment facility repiping project. We received two quotes, a low at $152,800 and a high of $178,900. The low quote was submitted by Rice Lake Construction Group out of Deerwood. As the council may recall, this is a project where we're actually reversing how the water goes through the plant. Right now, it goes through the VOC tower and then into the filter, and this would actually, we'd put it through the filter first, and then to the VOC tower, which would reduce the need for the acid addition and save considerable costs for the facility. The payback is projected to be about a two-and-a-half-year payback period, so... Actually, it was originally planned to run this way, but through, through the health department originally wanted it to go through the VOC tower first, so that's why we're looking at the change now, so... Rice Lake Construction Group actually completed the VOC project for the, for the city a few years ago, so they're very familiar with the project. So if the council wishes to move forward, we'd recommend awarding that quote to Rice Lake Construction Group of Deerwood in the amount of $152,800.
Health departments are good with it now?
Yep, yep.
But they're not going to pay for it, though, are they?
No. Uh, no. Is there going to be any downtime with this?
For the treatment plan?
Yeah.
No, there will be...
No. So homeowners aren't going to notice the difference? Okay. I move to approve the quote from Rice Lake Construction, the amount of $152,800 for the water treatment facility improvements.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the quote from Rice Lake Construction in the amount of $152,800 for the water treatment facility improvements. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is our Minnesota Safe Routes to School.
Add your package is a, is a summary of the Safe Routes to School Planning Assistance Grant. This is something we've talked about a couple times in the past. What this process would really allow is you put together, it's a planning effort to put together sort of a community-wide plan that identifies the, the needs around the community to get children safely to school, so it's a process. The program hasn't officially came out yet this year, that's why the dates in this one are still old. We do believe that, that program should be coming out, the solicitation should be coming out in the near future. Basically, what this allows you to do is, once you go through the planning process, it allows you to access some funding for the infrastructure improvements that are part of the plan, so it's sort of the first step in the process. So, right now, I guess this is just informational, once, once the official solicitation comes out, we can bring it back to the council for a sort of official action to move forward, and we'd be also wanting to work jointly with the school, school district on this as well.
All right, are there any questions on that? Okay, and then we are on to COVID-19 relief funds.
So, started out putting this action sheet together, we have held a couple department head meetings, trying to come up with maybe some of the best ways department heads thought some of the COVID money could be used. So in front of you, you see a list of each of the department's kind of ideas of ways to spend some of that money. However, since we put this together, I did get a, some information from the county. So far, we have had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 businesses apply for COVID monies, and that deadline has passed. Funding recommendation is $55,667 from the county. I did talk to the gal that's heading this up and asked her, because the county is to put in 25% of our COVID money out of their money, which is, equals $47,332, and the council had agreed to put in up to $30,000 to start out, which is obviously over what our businesses have requested, so I asked her, which comes first, the county money or the city money? And she said the county money could come first, and we could pay just the remainder. So that takes our share down to a little over $8,000, so that drops our share on that, which is nice. I also received some information from Bill Spooner, saying that the guidance has maybe changed just a little bit regarding the public safety payroll expenses, and how they can be recorded. You know, originally, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, they came out, that it was going to be a little more rigid that if they were budgeted for salaries and were not directly related to COVID, we could not claim them, so I, I just claimed basic, I don't think anything out of police came out for COVID monies. But now it sounds like maybe they've lessened that restriction, so we could potentially cover some of our public safety, which would be police and fire salaries, out of this money that we have already received from COVID relief monies. So I had Stephanie run a report that shows what payroll expenses have been from March 1st to present, and for police department, it's a little bit over $168,000, and for fire department, it's low over $41,000. So we certainly have enough payroll monies there to eat up the rest of our COVID money if you want to reduce the bottom line of our 2020 finances.
Okay, this, the $61,945 is what's left over from the COVID money from the state? No, that's your wish list.
It actually does just about equal that, though. If you look at the spreadsheet that I'd given last time, we have, we were at a total of $71,000 in expenses for supplies, payroll, et cetera, as of August 31st. of 71,000 in expenses for supplies, payroll, et cetera, as of August 31st. We had potentially 30,000 earmarked for the county, we know that can now come down a bit, and we had some added payroll expenses and stockpiling in there that left us about 62,000. That number's going to be a little bit higher based on the fact that we don't have to pay as much to the county, so yeah, we've got some, at least 80,000 probably out there, yeah?
But this 62 is items that we haven't purchased yet.
Correct.
It's a wish list.
Yep.
But this money, um, I don't think the city should have any of it at all. The city has not had any impact or from COVID compared to the businesses in Painesville, and... But that program's over, Leonard. They only wanted it, we can't force it down their neck. So as long as it's there, why not help ourselves? Okay? First of all, that program is already sent into them. We can do, give money to the businesses ourselves.
My understanding is that we can only give money to any businesses or residents who have been affected by COVID.
Correct.
Who would have already been able to apply for the county program and haven't. Um, Belinda, on the list of businesses that applied from the county, how many got the maximum 7,500?
Actually, that maximum went up to 15,000, if you remember, that was one.
Oh, sorry. Did any of them get the maximum 15?
Two of them were over 10,000, one of them was clear up to the 15, one was at 12,300. There was one at 80, a little over 8,300, a couple, um, just under 7,000, and one that was at 36, and one that was at a little over 2,700.
But can't the city give the money to businesses that didn't apply for the Sterns County?
Only if they are affected by COVID.
And if they apply.
Right, which there is, so.
I, I agree, I think that there are.
My thing is that the city has not been affected by COVID.
Right.
The city has no, nobody lost their jobs, nobody took a pay cut, no...
Some of our expenses are up.
The city is funded, but there's businesses out there that have all...
The thing you can look at, though, is you benefit everybody in the town if you reduce expenses for the city. And I think you can't lose sight of that, that, I mean, if, you know, there's only a limited amount of money available here, but if you reduce your, if you reduce some of your payroll, it does help when you're budgeting and you're looking at budgetary issues, and it's, you know, nice to have that, but, but it's nice to give it to businesses if they qualify as well. I mean, I'm not saying that's not a good thing, but I think, I don't, I don't know if more people would apply or not if you, if you set up another...
Until it's set up.
The county said that the numbers in all the communities were much lower than they anticipated.
Because of the paperwork component.
But you can't get away from that. I mean, you, you have to have some requirements, it's, it's not, you know, you're...
And they lessened their restrictions on, or their requirements on the paperwork, and they said they had several businesses that said it was really very easy to apply for.
I mean, I still, in a perfect world, I would like to, the city of Watertown, Minnesota, mailed out $60 worth of their chamber bucks to every household in town. They took that out of their EDAP money, and I think we should, if we could do that with our COVID grant, that's what I'd like to do here, but my understanding is that we can't use our CARES money for that. Um, we can't use it for that type of an economic stimulus.
I think that's true. I, I think you, you could use your EDAP money as, as yourself fit, I mean, the money in our, in our EDAP funds aren't restricted anymore, I think you could use those however you wanted to.
Right.
But can't do that with your CARES dollars.
I, I kind of agree with what Bill was saying earlier, though, when we're looking at, you know, our last meeting, I think it was, that we passed a preliminary 60% tax levy increase, that being able to reduce our, um, expenses from this year and put that excess money into our reserves to potentially offset next year's higher expenses would probably be a pretty wise and beneficial thing for our community.
And I, Len, I hear your point, um, and I don't disagree with it at all, but I think looking at all of the programs that have been offered, the PPP loans, which were a disaster, um, the other programs available from the federal government, um, county money, our EDAP loans that we offered, these things aren't getting the participation that we anticipated they would get. Maybe it's a paperwork issue, I don't know, but I think...
Well, at the very least, this has to knock down the taxes, the, um, 2021 budget.
Right.
Say that one more time.
This, this, at the very least, wherever it goes, if it goes to all these entities, let's say you want to do it the council, admin probably works, then that has to go off your budget for the next year, for the 2021, and lower the taxable budget from 60 to 10.
Well, these are our wish list items that are not budgeted for in 2021.
But the other, the additional, like the payroll expenses?
The payroll expenses would hit 2020.
Right.
But those kind of things could offset our 2021 budget?
Somehow we got to help all the citizens of Painesville with this money. That's bottom line. But no, a lot of businesses didn't close one day, uh, and some of them are having record profits. I mean, not every business is suffering. Some have suffered greatly, and I don't know what we can do to, uh, your cafes and whatnot, it's still only 50%, I believe, and I don't know how long you can operate at 50% and still stay. And I don't know how many programs are going to be coming down the pipe. The feds are still working on a program, depending what that ends up being.
We have to give this to the county in November, right?
November 15th, if we don't spend it.
Can we put this on our, this also on our agenda for the working session?
Sure.
Can we throw in the working session?
Yeah, then we can, we can maybe get some of it.
My other thought is, I just want to throw this out to you real quick, if it's, could we use this for an advertising campaign, uh, just, I think billboards, but billboards or something like this to support Painesville?
It's not COVID-related.
I would say no.
To help all the businesses, we can't do that, you don't think? That's kind of great.
No, no, it can't, it can't be a, a general community benefit, it's got to be...
Specific?
Something that, generally, you have to show that it's an item that was caused or a harm that was caused by the pandemic, but you sort of have an exception for public safety workers where they've, in the guidance now, they've said it's presumed that the cost of, of payroll for them, even though it was previously budgeted for, and you're not, they're saying you're not going to have to document that it was, that they did COVID-specific services, it's a presumption that their work was related, um, and so it's, it's kind of one of those things that was built into the law. In August, they came out with some guidance and kind of took it back, and now fairly recently here, the end of September, September 21st, they came out with new guidance, and they went back and they said, no, we're not going to make you provide documentation, and the presumption stands. Um, I know I've, I've listened to, you know, some cities are saying, well, we're being conservative about it, we're only going to pay half of the payroll for our public safety people out of, out of the COVID funds, you know? Well, we're not, I mean, we wouldn't even be paying half if we do the other things we wanted to do, it would be, you know, a smaller fraction than that, but it would be something towards their payroll.
And I think my recommendation would be to pay the payroll versus the wish list just because that's going to help our bottom line, instead of buying new stuff that we could probably do without.
If everything on this wish list doesn't necessarily have to happen next year...
It's not a, it's a want, it's not a...
Right.
Well, that's a...
So we're going to throw in the working session then, is what the council's...
That laptop should be replaced. What's that? Can we add this to our working session agenda to talk about the financial implications and...
Better plan, a 10-hour session.
Bring pizza.
Yeah, bring pizza. Okay, so we're not going to take action on this tonight, and that is it for old business, and we're on to our informational, we have the August Police Department report, the petition for the Lake Coronas Aquatic Management, uh, Lake Hearing, which I believe you said was Thursday, um, West Central Sanitation, September garbage rates, and October and November meeting schedules, and with that, we will adjourn. Oh, look at that, an hour perfectly...